All right. Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board Meeting for November 2nd at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge, Legion. This is the United States of America. In the name of our public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody ever get a chance to look at September 7th minutes?
Yes.
Everybody satisfied with September 7th?
I don't remember who the voting members are for that one.
Chris, John, Ryan, any of you?
No, thank you. I didn't have it on.
All right. Can I get a motion on the 7th?
I move we approve the minutes for September 7th.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Four, nothing.
Adam, Gavin, Pat, half the system because they were... His chair's broken.
It keeps shrinking. That's the one I broke. Could I get a... Over September 21st? Not be present was myself, Gavin, John, and Pat.
Accept the minutes for September 21st?
Second.
All in favor? And the last but not least, how about October 19th's minutes? Members present were Gavin, Pat, Adam, and Andrew.
I'll make the motion to accept the October 19th minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor? Get it for... Do you want me to start with?
Yeah. Yeah, because he's not here, right?
Yeah. Yeah, Adam. Yeah, no, he's not here yet. All right, I'd like to call, uh, John O'Keefe, 9193 Fox's Ridge Road, map 248 lot 009, site plan review, public hearing. If you just want to introduce yourself to the public and tell the public a little bit of the project, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So, my name is Michael Manery with Civil Works New England. Uh, this is Joe Griffin, PE with Civil Works New England. Uh, we're presenting the project on 193 Fox's Ridge Road, tax map 248, lot number nine. So, it's a three, uh, three cell storage unit buildings with, um, 8,100 square feet, approximately a total building. Uh, there's no disturbance to any wetland or buffers with this project. Um, to mitigate stormwater, we're proposing a soil filter as well as a roof line infiltration trench on that third, uh, storage unit building. Total disturbance of the site is under an acre, um, as well as we're requesting two waivers, uh, one for... To not allow, well, so, to not allow WB40s under the site, as well as, um, a landscape waiver for that front, um, in front of the proposed soil filter. So, uh, with the DOT, we submitted, uh, back in August 25th, and we got the accepted driveway permit. I have eight copies of those, actually, so I'll hand those to you if you would like to see them. So...
So, as you may recall, the driveway permit had been approved by the state, and we were going back for an amendment with the state as well.
Thank you.
The state got us the amended driveway permit as of Tuesday of this week. So, we had tried to get the state to approve the 30-foot wide drive aisle, uh, for our entrance. The state denied that. They would like us to stay with the 22-foot drive aisle, so that's incorporated into the plan set. And then, the original permit had required a driveway cross culvert under the proposed driveway, uh, and we made the case to the state that due to the elevations in the area that, uh, culvert essentially wouldn't provide any drainage. It would act as a pool. The water would stay there under the driveway, and that would create an unsafe environment in that location. So, the stormwater, the main DOT stormwater engineer reviewed the stormwater design as well and agreed with our assessment. And as a result of that agreed assessment, he asked us to revise the outlet drain for the proposed soil filter. So, your plan set in front of you does not have that update. Our plans that we have with us tonight do. What he asked was originally that underdrain had included a two-inch orifice on the four-inch underdrain. And they were concerned with the volume of water that we would be storing there, so they preferred that that two-inch be removed so that it was a four-inch underdrain. Now, with that, we updated the grading plan, and we upgraded the detail plans as well. We looked at the analysis, and the analysis still meets, um, the design requirements for those stormwater BMPs in accordance with main DEP. And we still meet the reduction in the flow coming off from the site, so we still meet the stormwater requirements associated with a decrease in flow and the treatment of that stormwater. I think it's the next one. Yeah. So, in the detail right to the lower left, you'll see that one calls out a fixed outlet PVC cap, factory-installed two-inch factory-drilled orifice. That's been removed from the, from the project.
Is that on the updated plans we have?
You don't have that. They just, that just happened just recently.
Tuesday.
He submitted, uh, this to that electronically to me.
And we have copies of the plans with those updates as well with us.
Well, we should see if there's any comments from the public.
Are there any comments from the public?
Oh, I'd like to...
Sir, could you come up to the podium?
Oh, okay. Sure.
And state your name, please. Thank you.
Charles Adams. I'm at, uh, 372 Fox's Ridge Road. And, uh, I guess I really haven't been following the project even though I do get mail. But, uh, isn't there a large puddle during, uh, after it rains right down there at the corner?
Yeah, absolutely.
I realize it's a state road. And I realize that across the road is pretty much Bob Sprague's house. But is there a way that, uh, we can get rid of that puddle through this project?
I actually asked them about it. I don't know if they remember that, but, uh, I think they, I don't remember their answer. If you want to...
We'd be more than happy to address it.
Yeah.
Okay. There's, uh, there's a use because when it rains, it's pretty much a good undercarriage car wash.
Right, it works well.
Yeah, exactly.
I've seen my truck there several times.
I'd hate to see you lose it, but it's kind of inconvenient.
Yeah. Plus, it's free from the state.
That's the best part about it.
Yeah. It's return tax money from the state.
So, in the pre-existing condition, the condition that we're in today, a large portion of this site runs off the hill into Fox's Ridge Road, drains along the ditch, and the low point is approximately here, this utility full CMP panel. What the project proposes is... Okay. Right up there.
A little clicker.
You want to drive?
Bottom, little, bottom, little...
There we go.
So, CMP 10 is approximately the low spot of Fox's Ridge Road that, that you've indicated. What the project does is, the project captures and reduces that existing area of runoff where the development is from getting down into Fox's Ridge Road. We capture 95% of the proposed development. We put it into this, uh, soil, grassland soil filter right here, and that's designed to attenuate that flow. So, the intent is hold that water as long as we can to allow the water from the state's highway to drain across the property. We understand that there's a low spot there and that that drainage is key. We're attenuating the pond's size so that it's much larger, so that we can help attenuate that flow. So, approximately 26 hours, so a full day after that storm starts, two hours into that next day, we're still, we still have approximately 20% of that pond full of volume. So, what we're doing is we're trying to attenuate that flow as long as possible at the same time by not increasing the volume that's going to be on that slope, that side slope for the state's road. And that was part of the discussion with the state's, uh, stormwater engineer for DOT as well.
Have they offered you or us help with it if, uh, if the water's still...
Well, what they indicated... What they indicated was that this...
You didn't say no.
Well, what they indicated in the permit was that if there's, continues to be a future problem there after this development, they may require additional remediation. So...
To me, it's been the state's problem the whole time. Heard was there, so I'm not, I'm not going to blame it on anyone.
Yeah. So, what we're doing is we're capturing it. We're holding, we're treating it so that its stormwater quality is there. We're attenuating it. We're holding it as long as we possibly can. And then, instead of directing it down into the state's drainage ditch along the road, we're bypassing that and directing it off to the side so that it stays on our property and has a shorter path to that wetland.
Which probably help it anyways because they're already going to divert a lot of that water that's running out of that when it was the old storage for the boards, I would say.
So, it all sounds good to me.
Right.
But, you know, I pretty much came here just wondering, you know, I know it's, uh, semi-commercial property. Is that satisfactory to the project or do they need any, uh, some sort of zoning waiver for that?
No, you can step back. This meets zoning requirements.
All right. That's, that's what I was curious about.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public or comments? No? All right. We'll close the public hearing for O'Keefe's herd storage. All right. If you guys want to sit down, we got one more public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Next public hearing will be Nathan Gardner, 2740 Route 109, map 141 lot 045. Conditional use application for ground-mounted solar array. Just want to refresh everybody about your project and, uh, so the people at home can know as well.
Yeah. Uh, I'm planning on putting in a solar array, uh, for, uh, personal use, just for the, uh, my family. It's been sized approximately 20 panels. It would be a ground mount. It's based halfway down the field, approximately where the fence line is. Yeah, somewhere is in that area.
All right. Any public comment on this? All right. We'll close this public hearing. You wanted to keep them up here?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. We'll start you off with the whole business, Nathan, just so it just stay right, right there.
Just because, because it'll just take less time.
Yeah, because it'll take less time, and that's how it is on the agenda.
How was the sidewalk?
It was pretty straightforward.
All right. Pretty good.
Anybody really come up with any, anything they want to discuss about the project?
No real line of sight to any other properties.
Yeah.
Not even really from the road.
Not at all, really.
No. Very cut and dry.
The array is how far off the ground? I was trying to find...
You're saying eight foot four?
Eight foot four. On the backside and one foot four on the front.
Should we read through the conditions, standards?
If you want to.
Yeah, we need to before...
Right.
Yeah, I'll read them if somebody wants to, uh, jot down what we have to say. So, A, the use will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
No.
Yes, it will not.
Yes, it will not.
Yes, it will not.
B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
Say again?
The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
Yes. Yes, it's not in the way of anybody being accessed.
C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, it's not inconsistent.
D, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance.
Yes.
Yes. E, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. Are you, uh, in the flood zone?
No.
Oh. NA, okay. F, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Uh, we could do that under G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Do you have a plan for the, what you're going to do with the panels at the end of their lifetime or...
No. No, um, I would have to get them replaced, you know?
So, typically, we put a condition on these that either, um, if the life of the panels have expired or no longer use them or plan on using them, that it is in your expense to have them removed and/or replaced.
Right.
As well as keeping a buffer, so they don't want to see you, like, go and cut all those trees down. They want to keep that, um, sealed from the road.
Sure.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we hope that better, better recycling facilities are going to open up in the Northeast. I mean, it's, they do recycle solar panels, it's just, I think they have to, you know, it's mostly out, out west right now, but we hope that you would seek that route at the time.
Hopefully, in 30 years, we'll have something.
Yeah, I mean, you would think, right?
Yeah. That's if they make it that long.
Do you have a 30-year warranty or...
Yeah.
All right. H, a stormwater drainage system capable of handling 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. NA, yeah. I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. So, when they grub out your site, you're going to, what are they going to reseed with?
Good question.
Well, these are put in, uh, probably with those piles again, aren't they?
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, they're put in with their helical piles, so they're very, little impact.
Yeah. I mean, they would have to, they're, they are going to ditch to run the, uh, the power line.
All the wires, yeah.
Right, from the house. I assume it's coming right from the, the house to the, um, you know, to the panels.
So, you'd be okay if we just put a condition that you replant grass in those areas with in a timely fashion to keep dust down and everything like that?
Yeah.
J, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of proposed use and for fire protection purposes. Are you going to have batteries in your house?
No, no batteries.
Okay. Minimal fire danger, I think.
I don't even know if that's applicable.
Yeah, I don't even know if that's applicable.
Okay. Uh, K, the provisions for bumper, buffer strips and on-site landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like.
Yes.
Yes.
And those buffer strips will be maintained throughout the life of the panels, so to speak, or the project. L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Yes.
And M, archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
Yes.
All right.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, that the board approved the conditional use application of Nathan Gardner at 2740 Route 109, um, for the installation of a ground-mounted solar array 20-module grid tied with three conditions. The first is that at the end of the life of the solar panels, um, it's incumbent upon the applicant to remove or replace at his expense said panels. The second condition is that the vegetative buffer, um, that exists today be maintained. And the third condition is that, um, as, uh, the construction is finished, that we plant, uh, grass in a timely manner.
One second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Uh, I just had, not, I'm not opposed, just at one point of, um, conversation. Oh, no problem. We're holding the applicant to having these, uh, panels disposed of at the end of their life, but maybe we should hold the, uh, property owner responsible as opposed to the applicant because in 30 years, he may have sold his home and, or who knows who's going to own the, uh, just something for...
Well, I can amend the, uh, condition, or I said, the applicant will be responsible to remove or replace at his expense to property owner. Will be required to remove or replace at his expense. That's a good, that's a good change.
One second.
Yeah.
One second.
I kind of hate President Yip.
Well, we're, no, we're...
Oh, it's not open for public comment?
Not open for public, public, all right.
I would like to hear what you have to say.
Why would you have to remove them?
It's a hazardous, hazardous waste.
But they're his property. They're on his property. Maybe you could use them for something else?
Because it's hazardous waste. There has to be a provision for that.
All right. We're going to move on.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. We're going to move on.
No, that's a legitimate comment, but we're going to continue with the meeting.
Yeah, I've tried to consider doing this.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Next up is herd stores. Come on back up.
Do something. The one they had, the, the engineers said the roots would get into the thing or something. I know, right?
Can you just confirm for me, the, the, we've got the revised, uh, analysis, but the only thing that I see change was the post-construction drawing to show the narrower driveline. Is that the only change?
That's correct, yes.
I just told them to just give me the electronic one. I didn't think that you guys actually needed a physical copy of it. I can have it, I can print it up and give it to you guys. So, that's, that would be my fault for not doing it. It's on their plan.
Yep.
If it was to be signed off on by any, by biggest, um, best-case scenario, but... You guys want to go back to that page or...
You want to go back to that page?
Not necessary. John was just asking.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to make sure because this, this was revised, and I didn't see any revision except for the, you know, just the width of the driveline. And so, what, four inches instead of two inches on the pipe? And we batted the trees we asked for down in that corner?
Correct. Correct, yes.
What would the project look like if you have, if you kept a buffer in the front? What would that do to the project?
Uh, we wouldn't be able to put woody vegetation on that berm in front of the soil filter. Woody vegetation would interfere with the stability of the berm and potentially start to clog up the filter media in the bottom of the pond, as well as, uh, potentially plug that underdrain in the, the underdrain of the system, which is how it maintains itself. About how close to the edge of the road is the edge of the pond? Like, how much, how much room do we have there?
Approximately 20 feet.
20 feet on the left and a little more on the right?
Yeah.
Well, that's a 75-foot setback, the line that we see there.
Oh, yeah, that cuts through the, right above proposed soil filter, but that line right there is 75.
Yeah.
Now, on the right of the driveway, there's a couple areas that look, you know, look like they could be indicating bushes or lawn, or what are those two little, kind of near the sign? Yeah, what are those?
That's snow, right?
Snow storage areas.
That's where you're gonna push snow.
Snow storage areas.
That's not gonna run into the road?
What was that? I'm sorry.
And then that's gonna run back into the road?
No, that'll run down the side slope into, and stay on our property and back towards that wetland.
It pitches, that ground pitches to the back of the property.
So approximately where you see that telephone pole, right there, is the low point of the road, and it pitches from there back towards that wetland.
So for the trailer that's across the street, is that a house trailer?
That's Heard Storage.
Heard Storage. I'm looking for the...
Heard, that's the old Heard lumberyard.
House?
Yeah, not their house, the house across the street.
Be, you can read about it here.
Yeah, we positioned the driveway. We had looked at also possibly putting the driveway on the other side, but what we tried to do was move it into our lot as far as we could to prevent any lights shining into that neighbor.
With people coming out, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
What about a buffer on the other side of the driveway? That's where the puddle is, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't vegetation, I mean, that's the whole point of having a buffer as well, to help with the water. Wouldn't those plants absorb some of that water?
Yeah, if you get the right kind of plants.
They'd be thirsty.
Initially, they probably would, but as those root systems grow and come up out, they're potentially gonna inhibit that drainage down through that swaled area as well. Typically, with a shallow swale, which is what is there currently, you'd wanna keep that vegetated with grasses and things like that as opposed to woody vegetation. Anytime we're putting in a shallow swale for drainage, one of the caveats is in the BMP plan, you're removing woody vegetation so that you're not inhibiting flow through that system.
Is that, this line right here, is this the easement for Fox's Ridge Road, cause it's a state road? Do you happen to know?
That's the property line.
That's the property line?
Yes. It doesn't look like there's a slope easement on that property. The slope comes right up to that property line.
And what's there right now in terms of vegetation in the, between where it says proposed business sign and from there to about where it says, you know, two-story house along the road, what kind of vegetation is in that area right now?
It's a grassed area.
Yeah. So what would prevent us from having you add some buffering woody vegetation in that area?
So that, that area there is part of where that water ponds up, so any vegetation in that area could potentially, yes, initially help, but as that woody vegetation grows, becomes hummocky, and it can potentially hold water from flowing in that natural path as well.
But that's not where your proposed pond or anything that you're installing. You're not doing much with that area, correct?
No, the only purpose that that serves is drainage essentially for the state's highway, or the state's road.
And how, the, the state is up to the property line, right, so?
Correct.
So, it looks like just inside the property line, we could get a wooded buffer right there.
There's a prescriptive easement that the state would have because that's the natural drainage way for the road, so anything...
How wide is that?
So even if, let's say the owner wanted to go in and build a berm there, he can't legally do it because there's a prescriptive easement. The water from Fox's Ridge Road has drained in that direction since Fox's Ridge Road has been there.
It's not really draining, it's sitting on the road, so, I mean, let's be honest.
There is a slight...
Trying to figure out.
How far into your property is the, does the state's easement hold? I wouldn't think it would enter onto your property line, but...
There isn't an easement per se, so the owner hasn't said, "You have an easement for drainage across my property." What it is, is it's a prescriptive easement that says, "The water's gone here, the state has the right for that water to continue to go there." If we went out and built the berm out there, main DOT is gonna come out to the owner and say, "We have a prescriptive easement, you need to remove this. This is the drainage for our road."
Right. No, I don't think we'd be asking you to put a berm there. I think we'd be asking you to, you know, stop mowing it and to maybe plant a few trees or bushes there to help create a wooded buffer and then to not mow it in the future, pretty much.
And part of it is, part of the area, the fenced-in area is for pets and things as well. It's part of their yard.
In the back there, yeah, sure.
Part of the owner's yard.
Yeah, and to Chris's point though, if it's already pooling on the other side of that, right, and you put up more wooded vegetation, it might make that worse, that pooling on the other side, worse if it's stopping that kind of stuff.
I'm not, I don't know if that's how I look at it, but I would think, I mean, we got, you can see the 75-foot line there. I think we could get a buffer and have a place for the water to pool up and still have more room there. It's a fairly large area. I wasn't on the sidewalk though, so...
So that...
You know, that's why I'm asking so many questions about the type, you know, the actual area, cause I went, I drive by, but... Cause we like to get, you know, I mean, we like to get buffers on these things. And with the citation of their, where they're putting their pond, that kind of eats up a lot of the buffer, you know, so, I don't know, I think it might be a workable area there.
And so that was part of the waiver request as well?
Right, and that's what we're discussing right now is, you know, is whether or not we should be granting a waiver request or how to, you know, how to word, but, you know, how are you gonna address the request? Cause I feel like you're asking for, to not need to, to add any buffer really on the, what is it, the south and east?
Maybe the west side.
The west and, the roadside and the house side, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and we're just looking to get some plantings in that area, so...
Right, we provided the planting along that, outside of the berm barrier as we discussed.
The three trees?
Last time we were here.
The three trees.
Yeah.
Part of the criteria that we have to use for waivers is listed in the subdivision, 12.1, 12.2, 12.3.
Padded subdivision. You're gonna have to find something...
Doesn't it cite the ordinance though? What did you cite?
Yeah, that was in the subdivision.
Yeah.
Looking for something. Criteria that we have to use.
I know, it'd be nice to have better criteria for that, cause we usually just kind of discuss it and come to some sort of rough consensus. Or if it's divided, we vote on it, you know? Do we have an aerial picture of what the vegetation looks like in that area from approximately from the driveway to the house? Yeah, that's pretty good, thank you. You wanna put the cursor about where the driveway would be? Yeah, in that area, up a little maybe?
I think it's right around here, correct?
Approximately, yeah, about that.
A little further south because it's, yeah, right in there, cause the property line on the other side, it's further south than the property line. Something potentially, I mean, the fence in the front, we can put a screen through that.
As much as we like to have buffers, you know, and stuff like that, I don't, I don't see how adding any woody or deciduous trees or any, anything like that is gonna help the situation here with the drainage. I think, I think it's gonna prohibit drainage, if anything, because as the, as the root structures grow and as they come up, it's gonna actually be blocking the water from naturally draining, which it is doing now. Is the drainage there perfect? No. It does need help, and quite honestly, I think that's something that the state should be addressing. But I think that's a separate matter from this particular project. But because of the drainage pipe that's coming out underneath the driveway and it's going into that swale, I, having walked it and, you know, and with the terrain there, I don't see that it's gonna benefit. As much as we want to do that, and I do understand why we need to do that, but I just, I think it's gonna make things worse. You know, if they keep it, if they keep it, keep it mowed, you know, so that the, so that the water can drain properly.
It's more of the state's problem. They keep redoing the roads around the way. That's what's happening. You know, let's waste our money and butter the road and then change the pitch of the road, and that's what's causing it. Been there a long time.
Well, did anybody have anything else they want to talk about other than the waivers with this project, so we can just, you know, thoroughly, thoroughly go through the project and maybe we'll revisit the waivers and vote on them in a little while and then...
Yeah, I think we need to go through the checklist.
Yeah.
We make, good faith, they put the trees where we thought they could put some.
Yeah.
They gave us the contract that says no hazardous materials. Oh, no big trucks, was in the contract. So I think they've addressed what we've asked them to address.
Yeah.
They fixed the construction hours and stuff. Uh, I didn't look. Can you call up the page with the hours? They were changed, right?
I think they were.
Yes, they were.
Your page number?
It's actually right there. It's one of these notes.
I think it's on the site plan.
What is this, utility? I'm sorry, this is utility. Maybe the page before this.
Uh, one more page, the other way, rather, sorry. Somewhere in here.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Let me give you a little zoom in.
Seven to seven and eight to four. So what we asked?
Eight AM to four PM. Seven to seven, yeah, and eight to four. Looking for the note, it's 15.
Is he out of time when they're gonna not be able to come in, like your clientele?
Yes, we'd like to keep it from eight to eight was our intention. I think it said it somewhere in the comments, or close to it.
So the contract indicates the hours will be posted on a sign at the facility.
Yeah.
That way, if they change, the contract isn't voided.
Mm-hmm.
That way, we can avoid the midnight movers.
That's right.
Yes.
And the pot growers that sit in them.
Yeah.
And note number 16, refuse pickup will be the responsibility of the customer, so that's, that's meaning that the individual renters, if you will...
Takes it with them, or they get charged a fee for removal and disposal from the owner. That's in the contract as well, yes.
Looking at that site plan review sheet there, it's a lot longer than the conditional use.
It is.
Are we requiring them have a fence?
Uh, they did add a fence.
There is a fence.
And the site will be gated as well.
Is the fence on that plan?
Yeah, it's hard to see. It's got the small circles in the line. Nope.
Oh, really?
Yes. Ties into the building there, comes down across, over and front.
Oh, and then it terminates on the, on the left there?
Yes.
That was my big foot. That was my big ass.
It's just a disaster?
And you feel like that'll be sufficient? There's no reason to fence the whole place?
It's a pretty steep slope right there in front of the property.
Yeah.
Along this side here too, it's a steep slope as well.
Yeah. Yeah, the back of that lot will be cut in about eight feet, so it'll be a three-to-one side slope there as well.
Yeah. So I'm looking at page 103, approval standards and criteria. Is that pretty much where we're? Well, that's the, that's very similar to what's in the ordinance. I don't have that booklet with me, but I got page 103. Utilization of the site, adequacy of the road system, access to the site.
Yeah, that's in the checklist.
Yeah.
You wanna go through that?
If you'd like a copy of my checklist, Gavin, you can read off that or follow along with it at least.
John will read it. And we don't need to necessarily go through every subset. If you just read the heading.
I was just gonna start at...
Yeah, if you just read the bold, if anybody has something, then we can delve into the lower, whatever your preference is, cause there is a fair amount to it.
Information regarding existing conditions provided. Proposed, here nothing. Proposed development activity, 66463. Information is provided for water supply, sewage is N/A. Water supply, wastewater disposal. That's N/A, right? Sewages N/A. Surface water drainage is addressed. Impacts on downstream properties. It's addressed through their drainage. Solid waste is N/A. Customers want to take out their drainage. We've got the location. No, there won't be any chemicals as soon as the material's stored. We've got the driveway. We've got landscaping and buffering, but not all buffering. That's one of the waivers. I'm just going back to the driveway as well, the traffic. That's the other waiver for the big truck. We've got the lighting on buildings. We've got the location assigned.
Is all your lighting motion activated?
Yep.
So it's not just on all the time?
Correct.
And it's all downlit? Yeah, great.
Location of utilities and fire protection systems. Can you see the fire protection on the plan? Is that on there?
No, not for the storage units.
So there's electricity in the units?
There will be electricity in the units, yeah.
And there's plenty of room for a fire truck to get in?
Yeah.
Do we worry about the gate? Do we want to have some? Some way that the fire department can get through the gate?
Well, they'll get through one way or another.
They'll get through. Well, a more convenient way.
Book of key group provided to the fire department?
Knock box.
Or access to a lockbox or whatever it is, code.
Okay. Estimate of peak hour and daily traffic. Saw that somewhere. Which estimated volume of traffic?
Uh, 12 trips per day.
12 trips?
Yeah. So that warranted the, um, DOT 22 foot wide instead of 30. If it was 50 trips, then it would be a 30-foot wide.
We've got stormwater calculations. There's erosion and sedimentation. Control measures in the, in the plan.
So how, I know it's in there, but just, just for everyone again. How much rain in a 24-hour period can the detention pond handle?
So the detention, the grass-lined soil filter is sized to handle the 50-year storm event. But approximately 26 hours into the event, it's still attenuating approximately 20% of its own volume. So it's holding back 20% of the volume of that pond a day and a few hours into the event to try to mitigate some of the ponding problems that, that the site is having.
So a 50-year storm event. I don't know off the top of my head how many inches that is, but...
Um...
It's around six. We have it in here somewhere. 6.8 inches approximately.
Cool, yep.
Phosphorus export management provisions. Utilization of the site, the natural capabilities of the site to support development are noted. And appropriate measures for protecting these resources are included. Wetlands are outlined.
Yeah, we have adequate setback from the wetlands, the... You do have some steep slopes, but you're going to keep all those things vegetated, correct?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The slopes on the left-hand side of the screen, like kind of where the fence terminates, you're going to keep that grassed or?
Yeah, the intent is to lawn and seed, grow grass, yep.
Yep. Flood plains. Significant wildlife habitats, fisheries scene areas. Natural drainage areas. Mm-hmm.
Buildings are clustered.
I think they are. They're up on top of the knoll, so they're not, you know?
Yeah.
Makes the most sense.
Yeah. Adequate seed road.
Yep.
Development, oh yeah, no, exactly. All right, access to the site. Access to and from is safe and convenient. Site distances were good, right? Driveway is designed to the current town of Acton subdivision standards.
Yep, at 22 feet wide. That's, that's what we asked for.
Once of access, egress, avoid conflicts with existing terminus. And traffic flows, yeah, consistent with that one. Proposed drive, uh, grades are not more than plus or minus 3% for a minimum of two car lengths or 40 feet from intersection. What is the slope of the driveway?
It's, it's 3%. We've followed the, uh, the intent of the regulation. Buy a profile on the grading plan. Upper right corner, right there, Jason.
I'm going to this, uh, 7.3.
Yeah.
And the site distances can form, are most... Right, site distances can form?
Correct.
What other, do you remember?
It's, uh, more than 450 feet, I think for, it's a 30, 35 mile per hour.
That goes with the DOT approval, so they have, they require that.
DOT's site requirements were the same as stipulated for the town of Acton. They're on page eight. 450-foot all-season site distance plan.
Okay, 66474, access. Private entrances, exits are located at least 50 feet from the closest incident. Private access, in or out, are separated by an exhaust line. Okay, vehicle circulation. 7.6. Layout of the site provides a safe area of passenger service and emergency vehicles. Try to check the fire, fire department.
Is that big enough for a fire truck to turn in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sheet 14 shows the fire truck turning plan.
Mm-hmm. And that's what the new 22-foot wide as well.
Then the next one is the waiver request for the WB40. Non-residential projects provide a clear route for delivery vehicles with appropriate geometric design to allow turning and backing for a minimum WB40. That's part of the waiver request and they put in their contract that they can't. They can't use those vehicles. Customers can't use those vehicles.
I'll make a motion that we waive part of section 6.6.4.7.5. Internal vehicular circulation under the second heading down. Non-residential projects provide a clear route for delivery vehicles with appropriate geometric design to allow turning and backing for a minimum WB40 vehicles. So I make a motion that we grant a waiver to not worry about this subsection.
One second.
Favor.
I think I should abstain.
All right.
Um, you need a reason, you know?
Um, the owner is still on the site and I'm friends with the owner. Previous owner, sorry.
Yeah, well, we have enough to vote.
Yeah.
We got a good show of hands?
He needs to put a reason.
Yeah, it was for...
Yeah, just making sure we got, yeah, all right.
Uh, next was appropriate signage for fire lane and no parking.
Are you going to have any sort of signage like that written on the pavement or?
No, we haven't provided signage or...
Is there anywhere where you don't want people parking in there?
The nature of the business is typically the person is with their vehicle at all times. They're unloading it. We're not providing any locations for them to park vehicles there permanently on-site. So anticipation would be, in the event of an emergency, those folks are there to move their vehicles.
Is there going to be any, any painted lines in there at all?
No.
No. Um, okay. Would you want, would you be fine with putting up just a metal sign that says no long-term parking? Make it clear that, that no one can leave their vehicle there overnight or?
Something we can put in the lease potentially, if that's okay.
Something you're interested in or?
Uh, we could support that.
I don't know. I mean, it would probably take care of this simple requirement. You know, because you probably don't want vehicles there overnight, correct?
Yeah, vehicles aren't allowed to stay there overnight, but, um, I don't know.
That's where our hours define it. So I think the hours would define it, that your vehicle has to be out of there by eight o'clock.
I guess so, but you could view it that the hours define that the, the lease, leasing would be out of there by eight o'clock. You know, if the vehicle's broken down or something, they might want to leave it there.
It's towed. I mean, that's pretty common sense. If we use that common sense, we're going to still be here.
Yeah. Well, there you go. All right. Um, yeah, maybe just a simple sign that says no...
I don't think we need a sign. I think that the hours stated is what I'm telling you. I think that they say that it's eight to eight. There's no reason to put a sign up there that says. I mean, it's just for the cost. You guys have no idea what everything costs. Every time you throw a $100 or a $300 sign in, it sucks for me.
All right, well, I could, uh, I could see if the board wants to waive this stipulation.
I didn't see. There's a stipulation that says we have to have a parking sign if we don't have lines?
It says clear routes of access are provided and maintained for emergency vehicles and are posted with appropriate signage, fire lane, or no parking. And, and I don't want to ask you to have to paint your, your parking lot, because like you said, that's going to cost.
Right.
So I was thinking, you know, maybe a simple sign would work instead of painting. But we could also just waive this requirement if the board feels happy with that.
Well, just common sense isn't necessarily as common as we'd like it to be these days. You know, I, I don't know. I just, I would agree with Gavin's concerns that, you know, we just, we don't want disabled vehicles to start kind of piling up and blocking, um, emergency ingress or egress.
What if we just added a, a requirement in the lease?
Yeah.
People overtly stayed in the, in the lease, no...
All right, all right.
That sounds good.
Okay?
So I guess I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we waive sub, sub box three under section 6.6.4.7.5, internal vehicular circulation. And that we do not require them to have any signage in terms of parking, but that we do require it in, in the lease agreement. Well, I mean, you look at, I was looking at this diagram right here and the, the fire lane is pretty much the whole outside of the thing. If there was any, you know...
You're just, you're just, yeah, just like you said, you just add verbiage in the, in the lease that says no long-term storage of vehicles. Just like with the toxic chemicals and that kind of thing. So if there's a vehicle there, it's pretty plainly spelled out, you know? And so that, that does seem, no long, no long-term storage of vehicles, but the end.
Do I need to waive it?
I guess so. It's just, I'm, I don't mean to dwell on this. It's just that it, it just says are posted with appropriate signage is the verbiage in here. It doesn't, I mean, it may be if they hung the lease agreement up in there, that would work. You know, that's just kind of, I don't mind waiving it. I just need a second on my motion. Or I could reframe, reframe the motion because we talked about it.
Yeah, why don't you just reframe it?
All right. I make a motion that we waive sub box number three under 6.6.4.7.5, internal vehicular circulation. And that resultantly, we do not require them to have any signage regarding parking. But we do require it in the lease agreement.
Oh, in favor?
Same reason? Let's check in. Let it change.
Maybe she likes swords.
Parking layout is designed by the safe and convenient circulation. Really, again, it isn't parking. They go to their door.
All right.
Yep.
Roadways are designed to harmonize.
Yeah, that word.
Topographic and natural features. Minimize spilling, grading, excavation, or other similar activities. The network provides for vehicular pedestrians cyclist safety. That's really, is not doing. All-season emergency access, yes. It's no storage. They identified that on the plans. Delivery and collection. Delivery and collection services.
Means trash, I think.
Oh, yeah. Six six four seven six parking layout and design. I think that whole section is in there.
You don't care about which, the direction of flow? You don't ask people to go one way or the other? Just?
No.
Okay.
They're twenty-six foot wide drive aisles and thirty foot between buildings two and three, so they're wider than most roads.
Yep, we should be all set. Yep. Pedestrian circulation. It's pretty, I think we're doing all right with that. They.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think they need sidewalks in there.
No.
Stormwater management.
I think that's addressed by the drainage plan.
Yep.
Please speak up. Erosion control. Got that planned in the sheets.
Supply.
And a lot of supply in the sewage. Utilities. Screened from you. You gonna run line underground up to the buildings?
Yes.
Manscape is preserved. Groundwater protection. Water quality protection. Not gonna allow hazardous materials. The applicant demonstrates financial and technical capability and accordance with the zoning ordinance and plan. Was that demonstrated?
Uh, you were, you six point six point four point seven point eighteen, technical and financial capacity.
Yep.
I guess sometimes we ask them to show proof of insurance, right?
Know what we do.
That's one of the things we do, I think, is that. I mean, I assume you, you are insured for this business, that being?
They will be.
Yes.
Yeah, they own several businesses throughout the area, so.
And you can provide a certificate to the code office?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's on the list.
Yeah, I don't know why it's on the list, because that really wouldn't affect the town, but I can provide it. But I just, it's like my mom asking me if I have car insurance. It's really not a business, but I do have it.
Don't shoot the messenger.
I just told you, I would get it.
So this was created long before our time here.
Yeah.
So many times we see the intent just of, of something like that being, do they have the money to finish the project? Are they gonna start it and not finish the project? Is it gonna be left looking horrible?
Right.
The clients are interested in providing this service to the community. They are outstanding business owners in the community, in other communities surrounding town. The, one of the owners lives on site. His intent is not to, to open this up and leave it looking like a, a bomb went off in the middle of his yard. His intent is to finish the project.
Right.
No solid waste disposal. Historic and archaeological resources.
The site's been historically disturbed prior to our use. It was the herd storage drying area. Uh, there's a little pavement up there.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's noted as a historical archaeological resource in the comprehensive plan. I think you should be all set on that.
Uh, floodplain management. Is it in the floodplain? Nope?
No.
Okay. And fire protection. We're gonna have the, give the fire department access.
If that comes up during the building permitting process, we'd be more than happy to, to meet whatever the NFPA indicates we need to. We won't get a building permit if we don't.
Right, right. I think you're all, I think we're okay on that.
Okay.
Right, made it through.
So I think the only we have to wrestle with is the buffer waiver, which would probably be too fully a partial waiver, because they are doing some planting.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I guess we vote on that. I make a motion, we grant the applicant a partial waiver for the buffer requirements. For, uh.
For their site.
Yeah, for their site. I mean, they are, I wanna make it, they are gonna plant those trees in there.
Yeah, we should dis, we should describe the, the planting plan.
Yeah. We waive the buffering requirement, uh. Except for the three trees on the, is that, uh, west?
West, at least.
Northwest, yeah.
Northwest corner of the property by the soil filter.
Anybody be opposed to asking to put more than three trees in a seventy-five to seventy-five foot area or? We feel like that's sufficient. You went over it last time. You feel like that's sufficient?
I think so. I mean, it's not a, it's, the issue for me was it was a house kitty corner from there. I think putting trees there provides a nice buffer. DUIs from, for the place across the street.
All, second your motion?
All in favor? All opposed? Same reason? Just checking again.
All right. Any other? Any other housekeeping on this? We read through the standards.
I think they needed a spill kit at one time.
Well, we're not having, uh, they put in the lease no hazardous.
You may have already talked about this, but you're allowing people to store, small, store small engines in there, correct?
Correct. It's in, it's in the.
Okay, that's, I think, yeah, okay. Yep.
Tenon agrees to remove drain fuel and oil from engines stored on site.
And you enforce the lease. Why do you need a spill kit?
Visital, or car breaks down and starts leaking gas out.
I'm not sure they need a spill kit. I mean, I don't wanna be a.
Hide it on the other one we approved.
It's an N and L, it's an N and L, Chris, it's a stick. They don't need a spill kit.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's more for like heavy equipment. They're like, you know, they've got something that's got, you know, a hundred gallons hydraulic fluid in it, sitting right there, you know what I mean?
If we were proposing, proposing the storage of vehicles outside, we would require a spill kit on site for you.
Yep.
You're not gonna make them run over a spill kit if it's dripping a little bit of oil from the engine there.
They're gonna go ahead and check the units every day for hazardous waste, such as paints and stuff?
It's in their, uh, it's in the lease. If they do it, then they're violating their lease. That's how it works. Gotta have faith in people, Chris.
Well, have you seen outside in the real world?
I make a motion, we approve the site plan proposal for OPM property management. That, who's the address? One ninety-three Fox's Ridge Road, tax map two forty-eight, lot zero zero nine, uh, with the following three conditions. One, access, a key or code be given to the fire department for the lock box on the gate. The lease agreement be amended to include no overnight parking, uh, allowed in, in the facility and that the applicant provide the CEO with a certificate of insurance.
Second?
All in favor? All opposed? Standing.
You guys?
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah. Oh, no, we'll just do it right now.
They, are they, do they have to update that, though?
They, it's already updated. They brought that, the update's on the new one. Do you want the conditions on it, the updated, on the conditions?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, it's true.
Yeah, uh, so just.
Well, hold on a little.
Yeah, well, just bring me one with the updated, the conditions on the line and you will have the sign at the beginning of the next meeting. You guys don't have to come, John or, or.
Bill.
Bill? Bill can, Bill can present it to us. Uh, that way they can keep one more expense down.
Okay, so we'll provide the conditions on the site plan itself.
On the site plan itself, on the, on the cover page.
Yes.
And then your title block or signature block, excuse me.
Should we wait for a specific verbiage from you so that it aligns with what your conditions show?
Um, if you, if, yeah, when, when we get the, when the A-Pat posts the video, we'll make sure we get the exact conditions and I'll, I'll email them over to you.
Yeah.
What kind of insurance, if you want what you like. You want building coverage, you want people coverage? What kind of insurance do you want?
Does it require them to have renters insurance?
It does, and it requires them to have their own renters insurance, yes.
Yeah, so just building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Is it on business insurance? What if somebody gets hurt on the property?
Is this the exact lease that you're actually using?
Um, that's the one we found that we liked the best, yes. But I mean, we may tweak it, but I don't, there's nothing really that we need to tweak. And I really liked the way it said it.
Pretty sure.
If there are any changes, it'll be right there.
Yeah.
Wait, we're moving.
Yeah, we got, you know, still got the solar array, yeah, true.
Yep. All right, new business, Kelly Orchard, eighty-two Sandborne Road, map two, three, four, lot zero, four, four, application for site plan, Acton Solar LLC.
Hi, my name's Jenna Gilbert. I work with CV and Mahar Engineers. Some of you guys look familiar. We were here a couple years ago. Um, I brought some copies of the revised layout.
So I didn't get a chance to tell these guys yet, so what happened was is they proposed the solar field, um, originally to extend where my cursor is right here. Um, we found in our new amended ordinance that it does not allow solar fields in the village zone. So they had to shrink their field to fit all inside the commercial A zone or B, I can't remember which one it is.
Yeah, commercial A.
And they're also gonna be asking for that fifty-foot buffer, uh, grant them that waiver for that fifty-foot buffer, so that they can get a little bit more into it. So that's, that, that's, that's what she, when she says updated plans, that's, the whole project had to get shrunk.
Revised again. I have a couple slides. If you wanna pull them up, I have.
Division of law break district boundaries.
I, I have, I have something that works, so.
Yeah, give me.
Yeah, see the, the red, the Marshall A. It must be right in that. Yeah. Right, that tiny little corner there.
Which one you looking to go with?
Um, the Acton presentation. That second one down.
It's all right. We're not in a rush here. We're just, just getting it cleaned up. I'm not gonna tell them.
Your pointer, you can scroll through with yours?
Should be able to.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
Uh, let me make it so it all fits on there. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, again, like I said, my name's Jenna. I'm with CV and Mahar Engineers. Um, on behalf of Acton Solar LLC, uh, this, this property is on the Kelly Orchard's property right across the street. Um, so back in twenty twenty-one, we had a, a fourteen acre project. It was a bit larger than this one, uh, footprint size and array capacity size. It was about two point seven five megawatts and now we're reduced down to point six megawatts AC.
So I'm a layman. I don't know what that means, but that seems like a significant drop for not much of a footprint drop.
Well, the scale of which we dropped the footprint, i- it is pretty comparable, so we can, we can skip forward here. So this is the fourteen acre project and then this is the about five acre project that we're looking at today.
So where's the post office?
Um, I think it's this building. Is that, is that correct?
Just confirming that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we can look at this now. It's not a big deal. So like Jason had said, the commercial A and village district zoning boundary is this yellow line here. Um, we're allowed a fifty-foot variance, uh, as part of the zoning ordinance, and I believe that's a conditional use. So we were able to keep the solar array structure within that fifty-foot variance there. Um, and our onsite equipment is kept within that variance as well. Um, the site features outside of that var. Um, the site features outside of that variance, i...within the village use district would be the landscaping and the perimeter fence along this light green-colored, uh, section of the project here, to the south. Um, so on the project, we have some indirect wetland impact, uh, shown in this...this dark hatching here. Um, we had permitted that impact back in 2021. Uh, that impact hasn't changed. Um, that's indirect impact, so that is, uh, no disturbance to the ground, uh, so the trees will be cut and, uh, stumps will be left in the ground. We had submitted a main DEP NERPA application for a tier-one level review. Um, that was accepted in 2021. It's still active. It has a four-year life on that permit. Um, we submitted a DEP stormwater permit, uh, back in 2021 as well. That only has a two-year lifespan, so we...we resubmitted uh, that permit by rural application for stormwater review. Um, that was submitted mid-October, um, and it has only a 14-day review period, so it's already been accepted, uh, and...and approved. Um, I'm waiting on confirmation, so I can provide that to Jason, uh, but I've been told that it's been accepted by the DEP. Um, this dark green hatching will be our clearing limits. Um, most of that area will be left as stumps. Um, the 2021 project had the same amount of clearing limit, and since we were required to shrink the project, we are considering, uh, reducing the clearing limits probably about to here. Uh, that's still on the table right now, so...so Art, the property owner, would be left with more trees on his property as a result of that. This smaller project does have more landscaping involved. I know it's a bit hard to see, but there's...there's, uh, landscaping shown here, some evergreens shown here, a total of 48 evergreens along the west and the south of the property. The planner had asked me to provide a little bit more information about that buffer. We're probably gonna be going with, uh, blue point junipers, which get to 12 feet tall total...total height. Um, the array itself will be a maximum 10 feet tall when it's all said and done.
You'd put a native species instead of a blue point juniper?
It is actually a native species that...that's an evergreen, uh, I...I've heard.
Not endemic to Acton, but...
If you...if you have...if you all have suggestions, too, this isn't a fire plan either. Um, yeah, so like I was saying, the buffer along here, there's about 48, uh, total trees presented here. Uh, the staggered width of the buffer provides about 18 feet width total. Um, so I thought that that was...that was a good piece of information. The entrance location will be in the same spot off of Sam Page Road. We had reviewed that spot, uh, for adequate site distances back in 2021, and those still apply. Um, the access road was greatly reduced, um, and is now a shorter feature to the equipment pad here. The...the equipment pad will...will house the transformer and inverters, uh, as part of the equipment for the actual array itself. Um, there will be overhead utility coming from Sam Page and a short run of underground to that pad. This is the...this is the concept we have, uh, presented. We...we've had to revise this one within the last week, so we don't have a full updated plan set yet. I know you were all given a plan set, um, for the previous layout, but we'll need to update those, um, and should be...should be given to you by the next meeting in a couple weeks. So, the array, uh, field itself, uh, will be stumped and smoothed, um, and reseeded with a pollinator mix. Uh, the...the array itself is...is facing north-to-south orientation. This will be a tracker system, is what they call it in the solar world. Um, it'll rotate east to west, uh, with the movement of the sun throughout the day. Um, and I...and I know only so little about solar. I'm more of a site civil myself, so... I'm not...I'm not an electrical engineer, so if you have further questions about that, I can...I can take them down and...and get you answers on that.
These on concrete pads or they on the piles?
They're on the pile, so the very small square foot piles. And it'll probably be a single row of piles, uh, rather than two, as some...as some are.
What's the height of the arrays?
10 feet maximum. It...it might be even a little bit smaller than 10, when it's all said and done. Um, we will be leaving that existing 50-foot buffer, uh, off of Sam Page Road and Route 9. And we have, uh, the existing wooded area along the wetland and along the...the eastern part of the project, um, where a couple of significant vernal pools were identified. We've maintained the appropriate buffers around those vernal pools, um, as the DEP, uh, accepts and...and requests, uh, for...for any vernal pool related to a wetland. This project was also reviewed by the Maine Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, uh, the Maine Natural Areas Program, and the Maine Historic Preservation Commission, all back in 2021, and then this year, we...we resubmitted all three of those reviews. Um, and there are no historic...historic properties or archaeological, uh, properties or buildings affected by this project. Uh, Maine Natural Areas Program did not identify any...any natural features out there that would be of concern, any, um, any biological or plant life that would be rare. That...none of that was found at...on here. Maine Fish and Wildlife didn't find any essential...essential habitats mapped in this area. Uh, we are providing a six-inch wildlife gap along the...underneath the perimeter fence, um, as we had presented back in 2021. So, we'll be maintaining that, um, for wildlife passage underneath the fence itself.
Just to note, but the, uh, the old letter from the state says that gap should be seven inches.
Which old letter was that?
Woodchucks are getting bigger, I guess. Woodchucks are getting bigger.
It's all the rain and a bit of grass. You can go on, I'll find it.
Um, yeah, so like I said, the array will be grassed with a pollinator seed mix. It'll only be mowed twice per year at most, uh, so it'll maintain that...that high meadow vegetation, um, and that'll act as its own stormwater meadow buffer.
It's on, uh...
H3 or 4 of the, uh, sorry, uh, Jenna, of the appendix H. Says seven to 12 inches, seven by 12.
Okay, is that...is that an actual...
Elevated to provide at least seven inches of clearance along the entire perimeter, to allow for movement of small wildlife throughout the facility.
Okay, okay, then we'll have to look into updating that on our plans. And, uh, if...if the solar developer has issue with that, I think there's an option to do gaps instead. So, I...I will take a look at that.
So, the...just to be clear, the...the letter from 2021?
No, this is the new...
2023.
2026, 2023, from Maine Fisheries.
Calls for a seven inch.
Seven inches.
Seven inches by 12.
That's a good comment.
It's either you do seven by 12 openings or...or seven inches on the whole perimeter.
Right, right. Yeah, so we'll...we'll have to decide that. We're doing a farm-style agricultural fence, so it'll have pretty large gaps anyways, but not necessarily along the bottom. So, we'll look at updating that detail in the next version of the plans.
Do remember a lot of discussion about the...the times of year that you'd be mowing it and the... whether or not ground nesting birds would be able to do their thing in the array. I remember that discussion, but we...
Yeah.
Probably won't have it tonight, but...
No, and...and the fish and wildlife didn't have any concerns with any, uh, field birds or birds in general on this property, or in this area, in this area in general.
It was twice a year, I think, that they were mowing.
Right, we...
Over 15.
We were kind of discussing the dates, you know, how early, how late, blah, blah, just to...to allow that nesting time and the...
This is a...
Mm-hmm. But this is...we're just kind of reviewing the project tonight, so that's like a detailed kind of thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good.
So, and this, the darker green square, is that currently just, uh, woodland, or is that orchard?
Uh, this is...this is woodland, so...
Okay.
That...that point right there is woods. Um, yeah, south and...south and west of that is...is the orchard, as you can see, blueberries and apple trees.
And so when you come back, though, you're considering shrinking that amount of clearing?
We are, yeah, because the actual array needs...we need so much of a setback, you know, it's...it's pretty tight in this area and into the north. Um, but we should be able to shrink this. I'll be talking with the...with the solar developer about that and see what we can do.
Okay, good.
They also asked that financial capacity is a...is a condition for this project. Um, we asked the same in the first permitting application, so we just asked the same this time, so I just wanted to let that be known. So, yeah, like I said before, oh, sorry.
I can just say that...
Financial capacity, so we didn't include financial capacity with the application, only technical capacity. But we asked that financial is...is put as a condition for the project, um, if that will be required by the board and by the code enforcement.
Do you have an estimated value for the project?
Um, actually, no. I'm so used to looking at the decommissioning, I don't have that. I don't have that number.
Right, decommission, that's a whole nother thing, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That would be part of that financial capacity, actually.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So, I haven't seen any of that.
Your plan came up with an estimate for, um, the boss associated with decommission?
Yes, yeah, so I can actually jump to that now. So, we have a value of 22,500, just about. Um, the new section of the solar ordinance in the...in the zoning...in the zoning ordinance requires 125% surety removal, so we have that written in our revised decommissioning plan. Um, I have a copy of the revised decommissioning plan, if...if anybody wants a copy, um, we found...yeah, we...
It's in your package.
Mm-hmm. And I can pass that. I...I just printed some new copies today, if...
Select value is a net value after you get...I understand you can get, um, some money now when you recycle these things, copper and whatever else is in them?
Yep.
Do you know what's in this solar panel?
22 is net of that.
So, that's actually assuming that there's no salvage value, so that would be the most...that would be the most given.
Is that the...is the one you're talking about, the one you sent me just recently?
Yes.
Yeah, I think...I just put it in your stuff.
Oh, nice, okay, great. Okay, great.
So, what's the...the lifespan of the project's 30 years, or what's the lifespan?
So, the...the lease with the property is 20 years, with options to renew, uh, one time for 10 years, and then two more times for five years.
So, to 40 years?
Yes, but it's...it's more likely it would be, you know, an average of 30.
Right.
Lifespan.
So, this number at the 22, 550, is that based on if we took down five acres of panels today, if we took it down 20 years from now?
Yeah, it includes...
40 years from now.
It includes a 5% contingency, so it...it accommodates, you know, a little bit of, um, of that, that additional cost that...that's...that could be in the future, but we...we don't have that value projected. Uh, we have a 5% contingency worked into there, yeah.
I think it was like, we...I...what was it like? There was a formula for that.
It's also why it's 125%.
To calculate for inflation.
100%.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that was...
125% will cover that, too, with a 5%. You said 5%?
Yep, yeah, so the 5% is on top of the first value.
Yeah, but you look at the numbers, 40 years from now, is 30 grand gonna take down five acres of solar panels?
We have no way of knowing, really, I mean...
I would probably say not.
I...I don't think so. I'm just putting it out there, and it's...it's...we're gonna be discussing it, but...
Don't we have a provision to review it in the new ordinance?
After 10 years.
I'd have to go back and...
We're gonna have to look at that.
Do you know what's in the solar panels?
Probably with the...
What are they made of?
What? Oh, oh, so...
Do we have that?
Yeah, I have it in the decommissioning document, actually.
You would have picked up your package and probably...
If you guys open up on Saturday.
So, there's no...there's no hazardous material inside. The...the glass, the exterior glass would encase...it's a silicon-based, um... It's a silicon-based material inside, uh, and that's not a hazardous material, so if... if the array, uh, panels were to break during decommissioning, they could be easily disposed at a landfill.
Right.
Uh, the metals in the project have...there's copper, aluminum, galvanized steel. And, um, the actual piles themselves would be removed and are also a galvanized material.
And that number includes revegetation after it's taken down?
It does, yeah, so the decommissioning process includes, um, the dismantlement, disposal, and the site stabilization.
22 grand?
28...28,000, yeah, over $28,000.
Yeah, the...the ordinance says that we'll review it, or our designated, Jason, will review it every 10 years and adjust as necessary. So, I think there is some protection.
There's some protection, but I want to start off with a realistic number, but we don't have to...
Yeah, we don't.
Do it tonight, I mean, I'm just... Putting stuff out there.
Just out of curiosity, um, if there's any, uh, potential damage to the solar panels, um, within that period, let's say we have a major hailstorm.
Mm-hmm.
And the panels are damaged beyond...beyond repair, and they need to be replaced. So, how is all of that handled as far as, um, they would be disposed of, and is that taken into consideration, including, you know, uh, final disposal?
Yeah, 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 so the actual project will have an...an operations and maintenance manual, and the Acton Solar, uh, group will be monitoring and maintaining the project. Um, so...so they would have to contract folks to come out and replace those panels and dispose them if needed, or...or recycle them, um, or salvage them. Uh, it depends on the point of the project, so if this is before decommissioning, then they would certainly, uh, be replaced, uh, hopefully, uh, so...so the, uh, array can continue to be in use and energized, um, for...for its duration of...of its life and its lease. So, so that...that's a great question, you know, that happens, you know, they do need to get replaced. Um, but it's not something I have, uh, currently, uh, written out in the decommissioning plan. Uh, we did add some language about, um, the six-month, uh, no energized period, uh, which was a portion of the...the ordinance that...that Jason and, uh, North Star Planning had mentioned. So, if there was an event, a catastrophic event where the...the panels are damaged, uh, we would request, uh, an extension from the code officer, uh, to allow us to, you know, have, um, longer than six months if needed, uh, to come out and...and repair and do any replacements that we need to on the system. Um, just so, uh, the project doesn't need to be shut down, and in case the array can still be used, you know, after that six months. So, that's in that...that new portion of the solar ordinance that I think John was...was mentioning. I'm just trying to see if I missed anything here. You can keep going with questions, I, um...
The fencing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we pretty much covered that, didn't you, seven feet tall and the...
Yep, yep, and the seven-foot-tall fence, uh, meets that electric... Yep, yep, and the seven-foot-tall fence, uh, meets that electrical requirement, uh, for, for solar fields. So that is, that is the minimum height.
Yeah.
For these systems. Um, the actual equipment at the, the pads and the inverters, the, the transformers, those will be all locked and enclosed. Um, yes, yeah, at all times, at all times. Um, and the perimeter fence will be locked and gated as well, and, and it'll also have a NOX box provided for the, the fire department.
Yeah.
So we have that written on our, our initial set of plans and we'll have that in our revised set of plans as well.
One of the things we have to kind of figure out is if the, if, if, how we want to view the fence, if, if it's, if it's part of the array or if it's a separate entity, right?
They had, we had discussions with this other thing and I kind of was just saying, well, we were shrinking you down, where the fence is gonna be part of your, it's gonna, the fence is out, it's not really part of your array and it's gonna be, your, your buffer's gonna be going through that, I kind of was just like, get the array inside that buffer.
You're talking about.
It is the board's decision, but that's kind of how.
The vision of law by district boundaries.
Uh huh.
And how we're viewing the fence.
Right, and that's kind of hard, I was trying to work with them a little bit on.
Yeah, yeah.
We literally just cut their thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we were able to keep the actual array structure and the equipment inside of that, that fifty-foot boundary.
Yeah. Should we, uh, schedule a site walk, get out there before it's snowing or?
As long as it's still active, I'm sure.
Can we do the, uh, two weeks, two weeks from today?
You're gonna have to do it a lot earlier because we're gonna have to say things.
That's the problem.
They are small, I thought they got rid of that.
No. Oh, yeah, where were you?
Did they?
They did, I thought they, they thought it was a unanimous vote to, to remove daylight seven.
Yeah, well.
Wow.
Okay, so you must have been watching CNN.
CNN.
We, we could do it on a Saturday.
Maybe be a Saturday, yeah.
We've done Saturday mornings before.
The eleven?
That would make sense.
November?
It's a holiday, I don't know.
Eleven it is?
Veterans Day, right?
Saturday is better than Saturday.
I don't know.
Well, as long as it works for everyone involved, I mean. Or we could do the following Saturday, so.
But that would be after the meeting.
The next meeting is the sixteenth.
Hmm, do you want to, you want to get it in before the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
That's all right.
Veterans Day it is.
That'll work for you, Andrew.
Any issue with anybody?
What time we talk?
Uh, I think so.
An issue for you?
What's that?
An issue for you?
Uh, there's some stuff, there's some things that, that might be going on, but no, I don't want, uh, you shouldn't hold it up because of, because of me, so I'd, like, if, yeah, no.
It'll be video too.
Okay, yeah, if I, yeah, if I can make it, I will.
We usually did it about ten. Ten or?
So eleven, eleven at ten AM?
Yeah.
Make a motion to do, uh, a site walk for the, um, acting solar array site plan on November eleventh at ten AM.
Is that the current access, do you think, is that?
No, last time we met, um, off Sand Page Road, right?
We did, but now half of that's gone, so.
Right, that's what I'm just asking, like, what's the.
Well, there's a fence there now.
He's questioning.
What's the access to it now?
Yeah.
I think last time we came in off of Sand Bore.
We came in off of Sand Bore.
But most of it, that part's gone, so they want to try to access off the post office.
Park at the post office and walk across the street then?
Yeah, jump the fence.
Fence.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Deer fence there.
Yeah, we'll probably, yeah, I mean, Art Kelly will probably drive it in.
Uh, does, I mean, I don't know if Art would let us park in his driveway, I mean, his driveway's probably right there, so.
And we just drove right into the orchard last time.
Yeah, best way to be going right there, I've seen, seen one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could actually drive all the way in past the, past the cell tower.
Who did they have a tree stand since five o'clock in the morning?
So, what do you think you'll be able to?
We didn't get a second, did we?
Are we, do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
We need a second.
And we're gonna meet at the orchard.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
On a favor? On the post? Now, what were you saying? Mr. Rude Boy?
I was gonna ask Jenna, are you, when do you anticipate having, uh, the updated plans?
Hopefully within the next week. That's, that's hopefully our timeline.
You guys want them before the site walk? Before the site walk?
Whenever they're ready, I don't, I don't think we need to.
How much, how much of this will you see from the post office, like, if you're driving, pulling out of the post office and how much will you see of the solar field?
Hearing.
Out of the post office?
Yeah. Like, say, not that much, you know?
Yeah, well, we will have some existing vegetation, uh, off to the, off to the left side.
Right.
Um, and I don't personally know the, the height of that vegetation, but we do have some, some small landscaping, uh, off to the side of the access road. So you will be able to see some of the, the buffer plantings in front of the, the agricultural fence, but the actual array is set back, um, probably over a hundred and fifty feet away at a lower slope, so it will be a little bit difficult to see.
Okay.
Yeah, we looked at that.
Oh, no, but it just.
Yeah, no, I mean, I feel like, you know, if they have, like, all of this around.
Didn't ask the question. You know what I mean? And like, you see that one on the H Road and it's not really pretty, let's be honest.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I don't know the structure of that one, is it, does it move, is it a, is it a tracker?
One on the H Road?
Uh, those are, those are stationarys.
Right.
So they probably have a bigger footprint overall.
Yeah, it's a thirteen-acre.
Well, yeah, and I, I just asked the question, wondering why, how much we'd see of it, because some people don't like them, some people do, and if we didn't ask the question, you know, it could come up later and she answered it, that's all.
So when you drive out of the post office, you've got those, uh, those long rows of apple trees that come right almost to Sand Page?
Yeah.
Okay, there's, it's gonna be, like, two rows down. Where it's gonna start and then head towards one oh nine.
Uh huh.
I saw a bear in there when you drunk it on a skunk on the old rotten apples.
You have to excuse my board members sometimes.
Mostly.
Am I allowed to ask questions at this time?
Yeah, go right ahead, this is, yep.
Am I, uh, or, or should we be submitting a conditional use application for, for the fifty-foot area?
So in our ordinance, it states, um, one of the things, um, if you, if you, when you encroach in that fifty-foot buffer, uh, it's, it's for conditional use approval. How would you guys want, you just want to make it a condition or did you want them to actually do a conditional use application for that fifty-foot buffer? It's just for the fence, right?
No, they get some arrays, so that, the yellow is the, the order and then the red is the actual, um, extra fifty.
Can we make it a condition? Because that would be very simple.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, um.
I think that's allowed.
It wouldn't, but, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the same project and.
Right.
And what, what would that mean, we would submit a conditional use application as a condition?
It just, yeah, it's a whole, it's just another condition, I, I don't even know, you never had, I've never extended into the thing. I would just, we would just make it a condition, I would say.
Yeah, I don't think we have to do two applications. It's almost like, it's almost like a waiver.
Yeah.
Just to allow you that fifty feet. Um, and we might set some conditions like vegetated buffering or something, but other than that, it's gonna be pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay, excellent.
I mean, there'll be a little bit of discussion, and that's, you know. Kind of a weird, weird setup, though, I.
So we were advised by North Star to submit an updated application with the plans, so hopefully that will be ready in a week as well.
Yeah.
Um, do you think that would be soon enough in advance to have, like, a public hearing and, and, uh, an actual review of, of that application as, as complete?
The previous one, before we, we had to shrink it, um, was deemed complete, um, as an application in, in, from North Star. But when they just provide the right information and then it's just your jobs to, I guess, confirm.
Yeah, it is a little confusing as to how we should proceed with, in regards to the previous application, just because we did enter this new verbiage into the ordinance since that time, which, which changed things like the village district and the, you know, commercial aid district. You know, I, I feel like a, a whole new application is.
Well, it is a whole new application, a hundred percent, because they.
Yeah.
They, their, uh, application expired in, um, June?
Yeah, I think a year later, yeah, twenty-twenty-two, right?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Were you saying that the, the application that we submitted in October was complete, October of this year?
The one that, uh, North Star reviewed, they felt that, uh, everything was, everything was needed to be deemed complete, everything that was in there. The review of it, it said that this application needs to be missed, um, but now you gotta just get all the stuff, the revisions to us, and then they'll, they'll review it again and the board will review it and, um, yeah, North Star said it was complete, but it's the board's responsibility to deem it as complete as well.
You mentioned the OPS Plan, I, I would like to see the OPS Plan.
What is that plan, I'm sorry? Okay, that probably wouldn't be ready until a building permit is issued or, or ready to be prepared. Um, because that, that would be part of the, the construction documents, um, so I actually haven't seen an O and M, um, but, but that is what is typically prepared for, for this project and, and the solar developer would prepare. Um, and I think in twenty-twenty-one, that was a condition of our approval, uh, providing an O and M.
I remembered one from, from before.
No, we didn't provide one before, it was actually a condition of our approval by the planning board.
Can we get a look at the old file?
Um, yeah, I gotta, yep, I'll dig it out somehow, figure it out.
Yeah, because the, the, the old one was conditional use and the new one is site plan review, correct?
I have it every year in the old minutes.
I think it's still conditional use.
Still conditional use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. I'm sorry.
How many acres is this one encompassing?
The fenced area is about four-point-seven acres.
Yeah, so I think, um.
Yeah, yeah, it got truncated down.
The thing about the operations manual is in the minutes of June seventeen.
Not really, because it's still bigger than two acres. It must be that medium one. Yeah. Accessory small. Probably. Uh, I'm looking at the, uh.
I have the ordinance book on my hand, can I see the ordinance book? I don't have the.
No, I don't have it.
So you went from no moving parts to moving parts now, now that we're looking back at the old limits.
Is that, is that the case? I don't know if we had decided if we were fixed tilt or tracking back in twenty-twenty-one.
I have a desire to be able to go in there and inspect connections.
Okay, then, then that would be a change in this project. So smaller footprint, uh, but it, but it will move, um, throughout the day. From an equipment standpoint, it's not a, it's not a whole lot different.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, I'm just trying to thresh it out.
I thought the, um, small, there was a difference between small and large, but.
No, both of them are site plan review, right?
Uh huh.
I was trying to look, I was just trying to look at what the, the size threshold was.
That's what I was doing too, because I know we had.
Did you find that?
Is it in definitions?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's two acres or more is a large.
Oh, is it fine?
Yep, yep.
I was thinking it was five or more, but.
Oh, no, the back in, um, back in twenty-twenty-one, there wasn't a definition, so we didn't have that, yeah.
Yeah, two acres is small, it's small.
What's that, John?
The solar farm's small, it's two acres.
Oh, so this is large regardless, okay.
Either way, they're both site under review anyway, though.
Yeah, okay.
So we got a site walk scheduled?
Yes.
Um, Jenny, you're gonna get some documents, you want to just bring them to the site walk?
Yeah, I'll do my best to do that.
You don't have to send a courier down here?
Uh huh, yeah, save time. So I'll bring, I'll bring the copies like we had before, so then everybody can get their own.
Um, yeah, okay.
Do you think, Jason, do you think it'd be a good idea if we answered Jamel's, uh, initial comments too?
Sure.
We can provide written comments, we can go through them, we can go through them now, whatever, whatever makes sense.
You're talking about this?
Yeah, it's the, the, the letter, yeah, from Jamel.
Yeah.
Jamel is the, a new agent of, um, Salt Lake for North Star.
New Ben.
But Jamel.
Ben still had his, his hands in, in this.
He still looked it over.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we had a Zoom meeting and Ben was involved in the Zoom meeting and that's when this all came to light.
Yeah.
The size of the districts.
Village district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A week ago.
Yeah. I don't know if we need to go through this tonight, we, I mean, we can go through it on our own and then come up with questions and, and, well, you know, or we can.
Sure.
I'd be fine with that, but if, if anybody wants to walk through it or discuss any of it, no.
Jamel, go through it, because it's just referring to some sections.
Yeah, and, and in the revised documents that we prepare, we'll be answering all of these as well. So we'll, we'll make sure we satisfy, you know, the, the, including the setbacks and whatever he's asking for on the plans and, and in the application narratives.
Wait.
Uh huh.
Any other questions on the?
Um, I did have, just...
You had one, didn't you?
Well, I think we just have to, at least have that discussion.
Yeah, I, I mean, we don't really need to discuss it tonight, but I could just bring forward an idea I have, and so that people can conceptualize it.
You want to just...
Oh, yep. I would have just put that in with all the other ones, you would have been gone.
Lost to me forever.
I got about six of those at home.
What was your...
Um, yeah, in terms of potential changes to the zoning ordinance for next town meeting, just something that, that kind of came up to me was, I'd like it when a landowner in the town plans, you know, is, is commencing a timber harvest, that they notify the town.
They do. Forest harvester, uh, Maine Forestry Services sends the, me, an email.
Right. No, absolutely no, that's the case. They file out this form, it's the intent to harvest form with the state, but unfortunately, a lot of times, it takes the state weeks to get back to the town and tell us. So here I am, a landowner, I hear timber harvesting, I want to know if it's on my property line, I call the town. They won't know until the state tells the town. So I was hoping to get something in the ordinance...
You guys removed timber harvesting from the ordinance a few years ago.
Because it's...
Oh, this doesn't really have anything to do with timber harvesting regulations. It's more, and it, and it's nothing we need to really get into a huge discussion about tonight. It's just something that came to mind, that it would be nice if the landowner notified the code office when they were going to commence a timber harvest, just like they notify the state, be, you know, in terms of traffic on the road. Or in my case, my neighbor did just start harvesting last week, and I didn't know he was, so I had to run in there, check my property line. I had, you know, nobody had marked my property line. So it gives the, you know, the landowner time to mark their property line. You know, it's nice to have a heads up when your neighbor is going to be harvesting. Just something I want to put out there. It could go in right on page seventy-five, 5.19 timber harvesting. And what it says is, "All commercial timber harvesting shall be in accordance with the Maine State of, State of Maine Timber Harvesting Regulations." And maybe we could just add a little note that said like, you know, landowners to notify the town at the same time as filing the intent to harvest form with the state, or something like that. That was just one thing that I was thinking about.
I think that's a good idea. I'm good with that.
It doesn't really, you know, it's not a regulatory thing per se, and it's, it's open to discussion, it's, you know...
It's not like you're saying if you didn't know, you just called Jason, say, hey, they doing this here? And Jason say, yay or nay?
I have no authority over it. It's, he just wants, he wants to call me to find out if someone's going to harvest. And I have the, I have the knowledge, I guess, which, I just got an email, I don't know if they started harvesting yet, I just got an email this morning, and I got another one last week from someone harvesting.
Yeah.
Would this include personal use? Like, if someone's cutting down trees for their own?
Personal, harvesting their own property.
That's what I mean, harvesting their own property, not for selling firewood, but for just...
This would be commercial, commercial timber harvesting.
Commercial timber harvesting.
Yes, yes, like they're...
Sort of like a woodlot.
Yeah.
They're like, they're not, they're not getting some firewood and selling it to their neighbor, they're...
Right, 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 right.
They're getting tree length out and...
Gotcha.
They, you know, they've hired a contractor with...
Yep.
The equipment to do it.
Cool. I was like, I don't want to call Jason every time I take down a tree.
No, no. No.
Well, I think the harvesting, the forester, as well as the logging company, has to be very, uh...
They have to know where the property lines are, because if they're cutting onto your property, there's a big viol, there's ramifications of that.
Well, two things. One, you're not required to have a forester. Somebody can go ahead and harvest their property without a forester. So that's the first thing. So that's why I want to put it on the landowner, not the forester.
Even a commercial...
Yes, yes. Because we, like Jason said, we did go through all this.
Yeah.
So that, um, whatever, I forget what the second one thing was, but...
Do you have to have a license? Like a, you had, like, to sell commercially? On a scale, on a certain scale? And if that's the case, does that license have to be? No?
Um, yes, but you're not required to have a forester. So the forester wouldn't be informing, I just want the landowner to be informing the town before the harvest begins. I don't know.
Draw something up and put it to vote?
Yep.
That's all you can, you know?
Yeah, and maybe other people would comment, you know, because, because we have to kind of craft the thing as a group, not just, you know, it's better...
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I came up with so far for that. But if anybody else has anything that they'd like to see changed in the ordinance, it would be good to get, get discussion going, you know, because the holidays roll in, and then we're after the holidays, and then we're on, then we have to have the thing done, and two meetings away, you know? So... It's true. It happens. All right.
Save yours for another day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Second?
On a favor? On the post? Thank you.